The session is now called to order. Please rise for the singing of the national anthem. Please remain standing for a minute of silent prayer and meditation. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we defer the calling of the roll.
Any objection? The chair is none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the deferment of approval of the journal of the previous session.
Any objection? The chair is none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now proceed with the reference of business and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the titles of the bills and resolutions in first reading as well as communications. So moved, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection? The chair is none, the motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of House bills and resolutions on first reading for referral to appropriate committees.
Reference of Business, Bills on First Reading, House Bill 8685, Establishing Fair Investigation and Accountability for Road Crashes, Representative Marinho.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 8686, Providing for the Implementation of the Agricultural Road Infrastructure Network Program, Representative Nieto.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 8687, Creating the National Youth Apprenticeship Program, Representative Nieto.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 8688, Strengthening the Regulation of Health Facilities and Services in the Philippines, Representative Velasco.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 8689, Increasing the Recruitment Cota Requirement of Female PNP Officers, Representative Pimentel, Gonzalez, Ortega, several others.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
Resolutions, our resolution 2337, urging the House to the Committee on Government, Enterprise and Privatization, to review the privatization of water utilities, Representative Saradip, Rosas and Casilau.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 2338, urging the DOH to implement the Public Act Number 8543 and its corresponding implementing rules, Representative Tan Sherni.
To the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended.
So... No, no, no. Period of sponsorship of... Yeah. You pay hard. The amendment is... Because... It's a... Let us know whether... We can...
So there being no other... So Madam Speaker, I move that we move to second reading.
Check him out.
It's banana down.
It was... It's a...
Oh, so it's not...
It's a...
Oh, yeah.
It's a... Oh.
It's a...
Fifty-five. Strike the... I think he was saying something. Maybe get tired of that. Who's that? Or a... Put in a... I think my hair... That's a... That's a... It's a... There's a... He's not... Like that one. He's not... I think he's... When he gets... How about you, Frank? But... He do... He do right now. But what... Ah, so he... So... There was a... He... He... But what... She...
Next week? Next week, Taran?
There's a... There's a... Okay, but...
For the...
I... 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 My own apple. I'll tell you more.
Session resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we call the roll of members.
Any objection? The chair is none. The Secretary General is hereby directed to call the roll of members.
Roll call of members, honorable representatives. Abaya. Abayon. Belianosa. Abu. Abwig. Acheron. Akop. Acosta. Costa Alba. Adjong. Advinkula. Agarau. Agabau. Albano. Alcala. Alejano. Almario. Almonte. Alonte. Alvarez Franz. Alvarez Mercedes. Alvarez Pantalyon. Amante. Amatong. Andaya. Angara Castillo. Antonino. Antonio. Aquino Magcaysay. Aragonés. Arbison. Arcillas. Arenas. Atienza. Gumentado. Bagau. Bagatzing. Bagilat. Banal. Barbers. Barsaga. Batawil. Batucabe. Bautista Bendigan. Belaro. Belmonte Feliciano. Belmonte Señor Christopher. Belmonte Ricardo. Benitez. Bernos. Bertis. Viason. Bilyones. Birón. Bolilia. Bondok. Bordado. Bravo Anthony. Bravo Maria Vida. Rosas. Bulut Pigtang. Cagas. Calderón. Calixturbiano. Caminero. Campos. Canama. Kari. Casilau. Castelo. Castro Franz. Castro Ferdinandil. Katamco. Cayetano. Celeste. Seráfica. Seriles. Chávez. Chipeco. Co. Coangco. Coliantes. Cortez. Fortuna. Cosalan. Tesologo. Cuah. Juárezmas. Cueva. Dalipe. Datol. Daza. Jesús. De Venesia. Defensor. Delmar. Del Rosario. Los Montalla. Demoporo Abdullah. Demoporo Mohamed Khalid. Duavit. Durano. Di. Lago. Enverga. Erise. Regel. Vermita Buhain. Escudero. Espina. Espino. Estrella. Eusebio. Evardone. Fariñas. Fernando. Ferrajuliet. Ferr Luis. Feriol. Florendo. Flores. Fortun. Fortuno. Fuentebelia. Garbin. Gárcez. García Gwendolin. García Enrique. García Albano. Garin Oscar. Garin Sharon. Gasataya. Cachalian. Perón. Go Anna Cristina. Go Mark. Gómez. Gonzalca. González Alexandria. González Aurelio. González Fernando. Go Roseta. Gulyas. Hernández Ferdinand. Hernández Paul. Herrera Di. Hofer. Alusjos. Javier. Co. Conhun. Labad Labad. Lacson. Lagman. Lanete. Laugán. Lasatin. Lea Chon. Lee. Limcaychong. Robregat. López Benher. López Carlo. López Manuel. Loyola. Makapagalaroyo. Maceda. Madrona. Malapitan. Manalo. Mangawang. Magundadatos Huarto. Magundadatos Ajid. Marcoleta. Marcos. Marinho. Marquez. Martínez. Matugas. Meliana. Mending. Mendoza. Mercado. Mirasol. Montoro. Nava. Nieto. Noel. Nograles. Nolasco. Núñez Maloniaon. Huminal. Campo. Olivares. Ong Edwin. Ong Henry. Ortega Pablo. Ortega Vininola. Paciau. Paduano. Palma. Pancho. Pangaliban. Panotes. Papandayan. Pichai. Pico. Pimentel. Pineda. Plaza. Primicias Agabás. Kimbo. Radasa. Ramírezato. Ramos. Rolampagos. Rivilla. Rova Puno. Robes. Rocomora. Rodríguez Isidro. Rodríguez Maximo. Roman. Romero. Romualdes. Romualdo. Roque. Sacdalan. Sagarbaria. Sahali. Salceda. Salimbangon. Salo. Salon. Sambar. Sandoval. Sangkapan. Santos Rector. Sarmiento Cesar. Sarmiento Edgar Mary. Sebeliano. Semah. Chau. Silberio. Singson. Swansing Estrelita. Swansing Haraso. Suárez. Si Alvarado. Tambunting. Tan Angelina. Tan Milagrosa. Tan Sherni. Tejada. Teves. Tiangko. Ting. Tiño. Tolentino. Trenyas. Tugna. Tupas. Ti. Umalí. Unabia. Ungab. Unico. Uy Juliet. Uy Rolando. Uy Baretta. Vargas. Vargas Alfonso. Villarde. Velasco. Velasco Cartera. Veloso. Vergara. Villa Fuerte. Villa Nueva. Villa Rasa Suárez. Villa Rica. Villa Rin. Violago. Yap Arthur. Yap Milencio. Yap Victor. Yu. Zamora Maria Carmen. Zamora Ronaldo. Zarate. Zubiri.
Speaker is present. Mr. Speaker, the roll call shows that 180 members responded to the call.
With 180 members responded to the call, the chair declares the presence of a coro. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move, under the calendar of unfinished business, I move that we resume consideration of House Bill Number 8179 as contained in Committee Report 848 submitted by the Committee on Negotiated Franchises, and for this purpose, may I ask the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill?
Any objection? The chair is none, the motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of House Bill 8179 under Committee Report 848 for consideration on second reading.
House Bill 8179, an act granting Solar Parasabayan Corporation a franchise to construct, install, establish, operate and maintain distributable power technologies and mini-grid systems throughout the Philippines to improve access to sustainable energy.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, the parliamentary status of the bill is that the period of amendments has been terminated. I move that we recognize one of the authors, the main author, Congressman Arthur Yap from the third district of Bohal to be recognized.
Mr. Speaker.
Deputy Speaker Yap is recognized.
Mr. Speaker.
What is the pleasure of the gentleman from the Buay Parkilis?
Well, the kind provision of the majority floor leader and the sponsoring gentleman. Yap, we would like to make an inquiry as to the final version of this particular bill and if we are going to be given a copy of this now before we approve it on second reading.
Mr. Speaker, can we recognize the author?
I already recognize the honorable Deputy Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, we shall distribute the... We can distribute the clean copy this afternoon.
So may we ask for a one-minute suspension until we get a copy of the final version.
Majority Leader.
One-minute suspension, please.
Session suspended. Session resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, as to the question raised by the honorable Atienza for copies, final copies of the bill, they are not yet ready, Mr. Speaker, simply because these copies are supposed to be distributed only before the third reading. We cannot do this until and unless we approve the bill on the second reading. We are still about to approve it on the second reading, so the copies are not supposed to be distributed yet, Mr. Speaker.
Noted.
Mr. Speaker.
I...
Mr. Speaker, we respect the opinion of the acting Majority Leader.
That's not an opinion, Mr. Speaker. This is the rule.
That is his opinion. We need to get a copy of this very contentious measure.
Majority Leader.
However, we get the... The copies will be distributed only before the third reading.
Not on the...
We are not supposed to give copies on the floor because this bill is yet to be approved on the second reading. This is the practice of the House of Representatives, Mr. Speaker.
We cannot approve...
We cannot take it from that rule, Mr. Speaker.
Because the amendments are not clear, and as I mentioned, this is one of the most contentious issues on franchises that this Congress, or for that matter, past Congresses...
Mr. Speaker, I move to rule on the motion that the copies are not yet to be distributed because we are yet to approve this bill on the second reading. So moved, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, we appeal to the gentleman to be more magnanimous on this issue. As I said, endeavor patay na kahihawalay.
His statement made by the Majority Leader is enough, and I think he's right.
I move...
So therefore, Mr. Speaker, I will...
Majority Leader, I will not insist on a copy, but I would like to ask the sponsor. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I will...
The tiny sponsor, I accede to one question.
The honorable Arthur Yap, Mr. Speaker, to continue on the period of amendments.
The honorable Deputy Speaker... The Honorable Deputy Speaker of the House of Representatives, Representative Yap is recognized.
Mister Speaker, I move to withdraw that the period of amendments has been finished.
With the kind accommodation of the sponsor without the approval of the Majority Leader, what is the parliamentary status of the Majority Leader? He will accommodate one question.
Mister Speaker, the parliamentary status of the bill is that the period of amendments has been terminated. That is the status of the bill, Mister Speaker.
We make note, Mister Speaker, that the Majority Leader is taking position.
We move now to the next...
I want to approve the bill on the second reading, Mister Speaker.
One inquiry, Mister Speaker.
Those who are in favor on House Bill 8179 on second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against, please say nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it, House Bill 8179 is approved on second reading.
The vote was not clear. We asked for a recount, we asked for an explanation, we asked for a head count.
Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, our rules say that we can only ask for nominal voting if the Speaker decides for himself that the people votes is not clear. May we know the ruling of the Chair?
The ayes have it and House Bill 8179 is approved on second reading and I have already ruled it.
Thank you very much, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, Mister Speaker, may I manifest one important issue related to this vote?
You have no the floor.
One minute, Mister Speaker.
You have no the floor, Representative Atienza.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. I'd like to ask the sponsor whether he placed in the amendments on this final version. The amendment that practically everyone is concerned with. We asked from him an amendment and I'd like to hear his assurance that he has included the amendment that if this franchise or this corporation, which was, which has been assuring the nation that they will provide cheap electricity, affordable electricity to the underserved and unserved portions especially. Et poikina tawan, by no less than the son...
Would you respect to the Honorable Atienza, your one-minute hang is expired?
Yes, so I'd like to ask him whether he has incorporated Amendment Number 13 that if this franchise or this company is sold to anyone, especially foreigners, it automatically is dissolved and non-effective.
The manifestation of Honorable Atienza had expired, Majority Leader.
Ang tinatanong ko po, hindi Majority Leader, hindi natin sponsor. Nilagay po ba ninyo 'yung amendment na yon?
Mister Speaker, that is...
I recognize you for my manifestation, Honorable Atienza.
Yes, thank you, but I'd like to ask the sponsor, yes or no?
Majority Leader, you have no the floor.
Mister Speaker, I respectfully move that the statement of Honorable Atienza be noted as part of the debate today's...
If the gentleman refuses to answer, then I'll take it as a no.
Mister Speaker.
Then this is a very honorous, abnormal, and questionable franchise that you are giving.
Proceed, Majority Leader.
I move to take up... I move to take up the resolution of both Houses Number 15, Mister Speaker. And the Secretary General is directed to read the title of the resolution.
Any objection? The Chair is none. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of RBH 13 for consideration on second reading.
Resolution of both Houses 15, Resolution of both Houses proposing the revision of the 1987 Constitution of the Republic of the Philippines.
Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, the parliamentary status of this bill is that the period of sponsorship and debate has been terminated as of yesterday. So I move that we open the period of committee amendments.
Any objection? The Chair is none, the motion is approved, Majority Leader.
May we recognize one of the authors, Mister Speaker, the Honorable Sharkey Palma.
Honorable Sharkey Palma is recognized.
Thank you, Mister Speaker, Majority Leader. For the committee amendments, Mister Speaker, we move that we replace the word senate with the word vice in Article 17 of Section 4, Paragraph 2, under Transitorial Provisions, specifically in line number 25, page 44 of RBH Number 15, which shall now read as follows. In case a vacancy arises by reason of removal, resignation, permanent incapacity, or death of the incumbent president, the incumbent vice president shall act as president, Adela President shall have been chosen and qualified.
What the House says? Any objection from the body? What does the Majority says? What does the House says?
We accept the approved Committee Report, Mister Speaker.
Any objection? Amendment approved. Next amendment, committee amendment?
Mister Speaker, there being no more committee amendments, we move to open the, the terminated committee amendments and we move to open the individual amendments.
Any objection? The Chair is none, the motion is approved.
We recognize the Honorable Frederick Chau and Mister Speaker for his individual amendments.
Honorable Frederick Chau is recognized.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. On Article 8, Section 2, Paragraph 3, specifically line 5, page 11 thereof, replace the word handicapped into differently abled, which shall read as follows. The remaining twenty percentum, or twenty percent of the number of House of Representatives shall be elected through a party list system of registered sectorial parties or organizations. The party list representatives shall be elected at large. They shall be represent, they shall represent the marginalized sectors of the Philippine society, which shall include labor, peasant, fisherfolk, urban poor, indigenous cultural communities, elderly, differently abled women, youth, veterans, overseas workers, and seafarers. The Congress shall pass a law that shall ensure, ensure that each sector shall be represented by at least one party list.
We accept, Mister Speaker. What does the House says?
Mister Speaker, I move to adopt the individual amendments.
Any objection? Amendments approved. Majority Leader.
On Article...
Another amendment?
Yes, Mister Speaker. On Article 12, Section 12, specifically line 3, page 35 thereof, add the following words as second sentence of the second paragraph thereof. Federal state shall include the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region as created by Republic Act Number 11054 and astratified in a plebiscite provided therein, which shall read as follows. Section 12, a federal state may be created in any part of the country upon a petition addressed to Congress by any contiguous, compact, and adjacent provinces, highly urbanized and component cities, and cities and municipalities in metropolitan areas through a resolution of their respective bodies subject to approval by majority of the votes cast in a plebiscite in the political units affected. In exceptional cases, a province may be established as a federal state based on area, population, necessity, geographical distance, environmental, economic, and fiscal viability, and other special attributes. Federal state shall include the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region as created by Republic Act Number 11054 and astratified in a plebiscite provided therein.
What does the sponsor says?
We accept.
What does the Majority says?
Mister Speaker, I move to adopt the amendments.
Any objection? The Chair is none, amendments adopted. Another amendment?
Yes, Mister Chairman.
Please proceed.
On Article 10, Section 11, specifically line 4, page 26 thereof, add the following words as the last sentence of the section. During their continuance in office, their salary shall not be decreased, which shall read as follows. Section 11, the salary of the chief justice and of the associate justices of the Supreme Court and of judges of lower courts shall be fixed by law. During their continuance in office, their salary shall not be decreased.
We accept, Mister Speaker. What does the Majority says?
Mister Speaker, I move to adopt the amendment.
Any objection? The Chair is none, amendment adopted. Any amendment?
Number four amendment, Mister Speaker. On Article 13, Section 2, specifically line 13, page 36 thereof, please add the words other high crimes or betrayal of public trust after the word corruption, which shall read as follows. Section 2, the president, the vice president, and the members of the Supreme Court, the members of the constitutional commissions, and the ombudsman shall be removed from office on impeachment for and conviction of culpable violation of the Constitution, treason, bribery, graph, and corruption. Other high crimes or other betrayal of public trust. All other public officers and employees may be removed from office as provided by law, but not impeachment.
What does the sponsor says?
Mister Speaker, I noted that the good Congressman Chau has mentioned ombudsman shall be removed from office. I think the better word is may be removed.
May be removed from office.
But we will accept, Mister Speaker, the amendment thereto, the addition of the words other high crimes and betrayal of public trust. We accept, Mister Speaker.
I correct myself, Mister Speaker.
What does the Majority says?
Mister Speaker, I move that we adopt the introduced amendment.
Any objection? The Chair is none, amendment adopted. Another amendment?
Number five, Mister Speaker. Replace the pronouns and he or she or his or her as found in the entire draft with other forms of suitable gender-sensitive words and phrases. Example, Section 3. No person shall be a member of the House of Representatives unless he or she is a natural-born citizen of the Philippines and on the day of the election is at least 25 years of age, holder of a college degree, and except the party list representative, a registered voter in the district in which he or she shall be elected and domiciled therein for a period of not less than one year immediately preceding the day of the election. We can use the word a registered voter in the district in which the candidate, instead of he and she, shall be elected.
What does the sponsor says?
May I ask, Mister Speaker, if the good sponsor is amenable to matter of styling to remove the gender-sensitive words? If so, Mister Speaker, then we accept.
What does the Majority says?
Mister Speaker, I move that we adopt the proposed amendment.
Any objection? The Chair is none, amendment adopted. Any amendment?
And the last amendment, Mister Speaker.
Please proceed.
Add a Section 28 of the article on the Declaration of Principles and State Policies this last election. Section 28, the states shall recognize the distinct cultural and historical heritage of Muslim Mindanao and the Cordilleras in the creation of their respective states. The Congress shall consider the historical, cultural, economic, social, and other relevant characteristics of these territories within the framework of this Constitution and the national sovereignty as well as territorial integrity of the Republic of the Philippines.
We accept, Mister Speaker. What does the Majority says?
Move to adopt the suggested amendment.
Any objection? The Chair is none, amendment adopted. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Antonio Tino for his individual amendment.
Honorable Antonio Tino from active Party List is recognized for his individual amendment.
Thank you, Mister Chair, Mister Sponsor. I would like to propose the following amendments. First of all, in the... On the second page, in the, on line, starting with line 11, this is the, after the Werra's clauses, the resolution. It says here, resolved by the Senate and the House of Representatives by a vote of three-fourths of all its members. I would like to propose the inclusion of the phrase voting separately. That's my amendment. What does the sponsor says?
Mister Speaker, can I ask for me the suspension? Session suspended. Session resumed. Mister Speaker, we accept the proposal of the Honorable Tino. What does the Majority says?
Mister Speaker, I move to adopt the amendment.
Any objection? The Chair is none, amendment adopted. Next amendment?
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Next, I would like to move to Article 2, Declaration of Principles. This is Section 6. Separation of church and state shall be inviolable. I would like to move for deletion of the next sentence. Relations between them shall be governed by benevolent neutrality. I so move.
What does the sponsor says?
Mister Speaker, unfortunately, we cannot accept.
Amendment? What does the Majority Leader says? What does the Majority says?
Mister Speaker, we side with the action taken by the sponsor, Mister Speaker.
Amendment accepted. Next amendment? Next amendment?
Mr. Speaker, the next amendment that I propose... Well, Mr. Speaker, I wish that the amendment shall be put to a vote, Mr. Speaker. I move that the body... vote on my proposed amendment.
So you're objecting to the...
I object, Mr. Speaker, yes.
Those who are for the amendment presented by Honorable Tinio, please say "aye." Those who are against to the amendment presented by Honorable Tinio, please say "nay."
Mr. Speaker, I believe the ayes have it.
Mr. Speaker, I move to repeat the proposition. I don't think the members...
I would like to repeat the question. May I direct the majority leader to please profoundly questions?
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend session for a few minutes.
In other words, we give a word to the original. Separation of church and state. Session resumed. To make the motion or question that is being put to a vote in a clear, precise, and simple language, may I direct the majority leader to please state the question or motion?
Mr. Speaker?
We voted upon.
Mr. Speaker, there is a pending motion by the Honorable Antonio Tinio, which was not accepted by the sponsor, and so the Honorable Tinio moved to divide the house. This means that a vote of "aye" will support the motion of the Honorable Tinio and a vote of "nay" is in support of the non-acceptance by the sponsor.
Mr. Speaker, before we vote, may we ask the secretary to clearly state the issue?
We are in the process of voting, and no one can interrupt the process of voting. Those who are in favor to the amendment presented by Honorable Tinio, please say "aye."
Aye!
Those who are against, and those who are against the amendment presented by Honorable Tinio, please say "nay."
Nay!
The nays have it.
Now the voting is done, may we now ask the secretary to clarify the issue that the body voted on for the record, Mr. Speaker?
Majority leader?
Mr. Speaker? Can we ask the Honorable Tinio to please?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. With respect to the question of Honorable Achanza, the question of Honorable Achanza had been properly answered before the voting by the majority leader.
Mr. Speaker, maybe we be more magnanimous in chairing this body. We are all elected members of the Congress, not just you, but all of us. This member asked to be clarified. Is there anything wrong with that request? You keep on denying the request of this representation, and you're being biased, you're being personal, and I would not allow that.
I'm not being personal, Your Honor. Bago tayo magbutuhan. Sinabi ng majority leader na ang pagbabutuhan natin ay mula sa amendment na pinresentan ni Honorable Tinio na hindi tinanggap ng ating sponsor.
At yataanong po namin, ano nga po ba 'yung amendment? Hindi niyo pinagbigyan. Sabi niyo, we are in the process of...
Honorable Palma?
Mr. Speaker, Your Honors, the proposal is that the Honorable Tinio made a proposal to remove the second sentence of the proposed Article 2, Section 6, and these are... this is regarding the relations between them shall be governed by benevolent neutrality. This is the sentence which the Honorable Tinio wishes to... proposes to delete, and this representation rejected.
I would just approach the sponsor. So the speaker is not...
Next amendment, Honorable Tinio?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Before your amendment, Honorable Tinio, may I appeal to my colleagues in the House? Makinig naman sana kayo sa kung ano 'yung amendment na pinapasok. Honorable Tinio, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let me move to the section on state policies. In Resolution of Both Houses, Number 15, that's Section 10. This Section 10, if I may read, "The state shall give the highest priority to the enactment of measures and enhance the right of every person to human dignity, reduce social, economic, and political inequalities, and remove cultural inequities by equitably distributing wealth and diffusing political power for the common good. It shall promote social justice in all phases of national development." My proposed amendment, Mr. Speaker, is that we include as the first sentence in this section, the formulation in the current Constitution, which is that the state values the dignity of every human person and guarantees full respect for human rights, Mr. Speaker. I believe that the language of the current Constitution is important not only as an affirmation of that very basic respect for the dignity of the human person, but also the use of the language of the specific terminology of human rights, which is in consonance with the international commitments of the Philippine State to the UN Convention on Human Rights. So it's important that that language be in the... among the state policies of our Constitution, Mr. Speaker. That's why I move that this sentence be included as the first sentence in Section 10.
What does the sponsor says?
Mr. Speaker, I would like to ask the Honorable Tinio what section in the 1987 Constitution is he referring to?
That's Section 11 of the current Constitution. So I'm proposing that it be retained there as the first sentence of your Section 10.
And then the second sentence will now read as "the state shall give..."
Yes.
We accept, Your Honor, Mr. Speaker.
What does the majority says?
Mr. Speaker, I move to adopt.
Any objection? The chair is none. Amendment adopted. Next amendment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let me move to... this is... Section 22 of RHB 15, Number 15, which states, "The state shall promote rural development, higher agricultural productivity, and equitable land ownership arrangements." My proposed amendment, Mr. Speaker, is to include the phrase... promote rural... promote... is to include the phrase "agrarian reform." So the state shall promote agrarian reform, rural development, and so on, Mr. Speaker. To include the very critical phrase "agrarian reform," since even the president himself continues to speak of the need to continue land reform. So this phrase cannot be dropped from any proposed Constitution, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, may I ask...
What does the sponsor say?
Mr. Speaker, may I ask the Honorable Tinio to which arrangement? Kasi po, meron pong rural development, higher agricultural productivity, saan po natin isisingit 'yung agrarian reform to be...
Ah, so, dito po, no? Section 22, "The state shall promote agrarian reform."
Then rural development...
Oh, if I may amend my proposal, genuine agrarian reform.
We accept, Mr. Speaker.
What does the majority say?
Thank you.
Mr. Speaker, we move to adopt the action taken by the sponsor.
Any objection? The chair is none. The amendments adopted. Another amendment?
Section 26, Mr. Speaker... ah, sorry. Section 25, Mr. Speaker, of RBH Number 15, which states, "The state shall guarantee equal access to opportunities for public service." I would like to propose the inclusion of the language in the current Constitution, which says "and prohibit political dynasties." Period.
What does the sponsor say?
Unfortunately, Mr. Speaker, we cannot accept.
What does the majority say?
Move to adopt the action taken by the sponsor, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I object to the position of the sponsor. Bakit po patanggalin natin 'yung prohibition sa political dynasties? In fact, that is in consonance with the other principles enunciated in this very proposed Constitution, when it says that... dito po sa Section 10 mismo ng RBH Number 15, ang sabi, "The state shall give highest priority to enhance the right of every person to political... to reduce social, economic, and political inequalities, and remove cultural inequities by equitably distributing wealth and diffusing political power." So, nasa principio din po mismo ng proposed Constitution na ito, 'yung concepto ng diffusing political power, and in our context, as we know, political power is concentrated in political dynasties. Kaya kailangan po ibalik dun 'yung... ilagay dito sa provisyon ito, 'yung prohibition on political dynasties, Mr. Speaker.
Nagkaroon po ng amendment na pinresenta si Honorable Tinio, at hindi ito tinanggap ng ating sponsor. Makakaroon po tayo ngayon ng butuhan. Sa lahat po ng pumapanig, dun na sa amendment na pinresenta ni Honorable Tinio na hindi tinanggap ng majority, please say "aye."
Aye!
Dun na po sa mga pumapanig sa kagustuhan ng majority na hindi pagtanggap sa amendment ni Honorable Tinio, please say "nay." The nays have it. Next amendment?
Mr. Speaker? Yes, let me move to the Bill of Rights, Mr. Speaker. Again, napakahalaga ang bahagi ng anumang Constitusyon, at sa panahon po ng interpolation, na pinaiksina dahil marami pa pong nakalista, si Congressman Bordado nagkita ko dyan, hindi na nakapagtanong dahil sinara po ang debate, pero nung panahon po ng interpolation, ay kinwestion ko po kung bakit ang unang-unang linya sa Section 1 ng Bill of Rights ay "the natural right to protect oneself shall always be respected by the state." So para po bang itinuturing ng Constitusyon ito bilang pangunahing karapatan ang karapatang ipagtanggol ang sarili? Samantala, sa kasalukuyang Constitusyon, hindi nga po yun ang pangunahing ginagarantian ng Constitusyon. Under our current Constitution, the most fundamental right, if you read it, is... sabi dito, "No person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law, nor shall any person be denied the equal protection of the laws." The first, the fundamental right guaranteed under our Constitution by the Bill of Rights is the right to due process, Mr. Speaker. So therefore, I propose for the deletion of that first sentence in Section 1 of RBH Number 15, "The natural right to protect oneself shall always be respected by the state." I so move, Mr. Speaker.
What does the sponsor say?
Mr. Speaker, may I ask for a minute suspension?
Session suspended.
Thank you.
What does the majority says?
Mr. Speaker, I move to adopt the action taken by the sponsor.
Amendment not accepted. I object, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, may I please reiterate the position of the majority leader in relation to the rules of the House? We are in the period of introducing individual amendments. The remedy here, Mr. Speaker, is for any individual to stand up and introduce an amendment. It is for the sponsor to either accept it or reject it. Interpellations or further explanation as to the amendments introduced is not in order, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, point of order. Amendments according to our rules...
May I know the point of order, Mr. Speaker?
Amendments according to our rules are subject to the five-minute rule, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, we are in a period... Mr. Speaker, we are in a period of amendments. If the, if the sponsor does not accept the amendment, the remedy is appealed. Not interpolation, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I am not interpolating. I am availing of the right to the five-minute rule to explain the amendment that I am proposing. So my-
May I suspend session, Mr. Speaker?
Session suspended.
Pinanggal niyan 'yung tickets na dalibre. May italbe 'yung eto?
Dito?
Hindi 'yung sa sponsor natin. Ay, toko na.
Mamaya pagdating doon?
Wala na 'yun. Lahat 'yun wala na. Ang mirip na ng mga-
Ano pa pabalik natin?
Lahat 'yun.
Ano nang stand dito? Eh, balik dito. Eh, sa ano yun? Hindi po ang makakabro. Article na yun. Didi dibok ka natin 'yung, saan ba 'yung, eh, 'yung requirement to run for office? At 'yung talay? Ano yun? Anong section yun?
Session resumed.
Mr. Speaker, I move that, uh, we recognize the Honorable Tinio to continue with his individual amendments.
Honorable Tinio is recognized to continue his individual amendments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Mr. Chair, uh, let me move to, let me move to Article 4, Bill of Duties. Uh, that is, uh, to me, one of the, one of the innovations in this proposed constitution. I move, I ask the sponsor if he will accept total deletion of Article 4, Bill of Duties.
What does the sponsor say?
Unfortunately, Mr. Speaker, we reject.
What does the majority say?
Mr. Speaker, I move to adopt the action taken by the sponsor in rejecting the amendment.
Mr. Speaker, I object and appeal to the body to decide on my proposed amendment.
The Honorable Tinio has five minutes, Mr. Speaker, to appeal.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, katulad ng binanggit ko po sa interpolation, ngayon lang po tayo nakakita ng, sa kasaysayan ng Pilipinas, ng konstitusyon na nagdadagdag ng Bill of Duties. At ang problema, problema po rito ay, uh, tinatali po ang pagrespeto sa karapatan ng Mamamayan, pagrespeto sa, ng estado sa karapatan ng Mamamayan, sa paggampanya ng mga tungkulin inihahanay dito. At, uh, kasama pa nga po rito ang, uh, tungkulin ayon dito na magcooperate, to cooperate with duly constituted authorities. No, ano po ba ang ibig sabihin ng cooperate? Ang problema po natin kapag nasa konstitusyon 'yan, ay magiging lisensya ito upang, uh, maghigpit at magsupil sa pagtutol, sa lihitimo, legal, at konstitucional na pagtutol ng Mamamayan na pinahing tulutan ng anumang demokrasya. Napakadali ng sabihin na kapag may nagrally kontra sa isang patakaran ng Mamamayan, halimbawa, mga Mamamayan nagrally kontra sa train law dahil sa pabigat na mga batas, na mga buwis na ito, sasabihin nila, sasabihin ngayon. Nasa konstitusyon, kailangan mo magcooperate. Bakit ka nagrarally? Magiging lisensya po ito sa pagsupil. Kaya po napakadelikado ng Bill of Duties na ito, kaya po, uh, minumungkahe ko na tanggalin ito. Wala itong lugar sa anumang demokratikong konstitusyon, Mr. Speaker.
The amendment presented by Honorable Tinio has not been accepted by the sponsor and by the majority. Sa lahat po ng sumasang ayon kay Honorable Tinio, sa kanyang amendment, please say "aye."
Aye!
Lahat po ng tumututol at sumasang ayon sa mayuriya na hindi tanggapin ang amendment ni Honorable Tinio, please say "nay." Denies have it. Next amendment.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, uh, Article, uh, 7, political parties. This is from section 1 to section, uh, section, uh, section 1 and section 2. Well, my amendment then, Mr. Speaker, is for the deletion of Article 7, the article that provides for the establishment of a two-party system under this proposed constitution, Mr. Speaker. So I propose, will the sponsor accept my proposal to delete?
What does the sponsor say?
We reject, Mr. Speaker.
What does the majority say?
Mr. Speaker, I move to adopt the action taken by the sponsor.
Mister Speaker-
Amendment not accepted.
Mister Speaker, I appeal to the body, Mr. Speaker.
You have five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mister Speaker, sa totoo lang, ito po ang isa sa pangunahing layunin ng panukalang bagong konstitusyon na ito. Hindi po ang federalismo na yun daw ang pangunahing dahilan kung bakit gusto ng Duterte administration ng charter change. Ang layunin ng konstitusyon na ito na nilabas ng House Committee on Constitutional Amendments ay 'yung pagtatatag ng two-party system. Ngayon, wala pong lugar sa ating, uh, sistema, sa ating lipunan, ang two-party system, Mr. Speaker. Uh, napakarami pong ibang-iba, iba't ibang mga, uh, mga grupo sa ating lipunan, mga, mga political tendencies, uh, may kani-kaniyang mga plataporna at advocacyya. Ang kinakailangan po natin ay mas maraming mga sistemang pampolitika. Kung gagawin lang, kung itatatag po ang two-party system, mga nahulugan po lang, lang po nito ng koncentrasyon ng pampolitikang kapangyarihan sa kamay, sa totoo lang, ng isang partido, 'yung dominant, uh, political party. Ito 'yung party kadalasan ng mga nakaupo o ng incumbent. Nakita na po natin ito nung panahon ng diktadurya ni Marcos, no, na meron isang dominanteng partidong politikal. Alam natin yun, 'yung kilusang bagong lipunan o KBL. Tapos 'yung mga iba pa ay, uh, mga isang platitong mani na halos walang, uh, impluwensya sa, uh, buhay pampolitika ng lipunan, maging sa loob ng legislatura, maging sa mga, uh, pamahalaang lokal o sa pambansa. Uh, kaya, Mister Speaker, kailangan tutulan at ibasura ang buong artikular na ito ng two-party system dahil susinsangkap ito sa formula ng one-party rule sa ating lipunan. Kailangan tutulan at ibasura ito, Mister Speaker.
The amendment presented by Honorable Tinio has not been accepted by the sponsor and by the majority. Sa lahat po ng sumasang ayon sa amendment, ni Honorable Tinio, please say "aye." Sa lahat ng tumututol at pumapanig sa mayuriya na hindi tatanggapin ang amendment, Honorable Tinio, please say "nay." Denies have it. Next amendment.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker, uh, Mr. Speaker, naais kong pumunta sa, uh, naais ko pong pumunta sa section 18 ng, uh, ano bang article ito? Sorry. Article 9, the Executive Department. Uh, sa section po, section 18, ito po 'yung section kaugnay sa martial law, ah, well, sa Commander in Chief Powers ng Presidente. Ang mungkahe po natin ay, sa section 18 po ng, ng RBH number, uh, 15, dinagdagan po dito ang salitang "lawless violence." Para bilang batayan, para sa pagsuspende ng Privilege of the Right of habeas corpus at pagdeklara ng martial law. Uh, para sa atin, napakababa po ng bar. Kaya, I move for the deletion of the phrase "or lawless violence" as among the grounds upon which the president may suspend the right of habeas corpus or declare martial law, Mr. Speaker.
What does the sponsor say?
Mr. Speaker, we reject.
What does the majority say?
Mr. Speaker, we adopt the action taken by the sponsor.
The amendment has been accepted by the sponsor and by the-
Mister Speaker, I, uh, I object and I appeal to the body.
You have five minutes.
Mister Speaker, napakadelikado po ng proposed amendment na ito na lalagay na, idadagdag na batayan 'yung katagang "lawless violence" bilang, uh, tungtungan ng pagsuspende ng Privilege of the Right of habeas corpus o pagdeklara ng martial law sa alimang bahagi ng bansa o sa buong bansa. Bakit po napakadelikado nito? Eh, ngayon palaman po, Mister Speaker, mula pa nung, uh, 2016, ay naglabas na ng proclamation ang Pangulo ng Pilipinas, si Pangulong Duterte ng State of Emergency, at pinabanggit niya na meron kasing kalagayan ng "lawless violence" sa buong Mindalaw at sa buong Pilipinas. So kung magiging konstitusyon natin, ang pinapanukala ng sponsor, ngayon palaman, ay maari ng magdeklara ng martial law sa buong Pilipinas, si Pangulong Duterte. So, kaya napaka, kaya po 'yung, kahit po walang anumang invasion o rebilyon na nagaganap, ay pihihintulutan na po ang deklarasyon ng martial law. Pang habang panahong martial law po ang magiging kahulugan kung sakaling papayagan ang amendment na ito na nakapaloob sa RBH number fifteen. Dahil kahit kailan, kahit sinong presidente, habang may kriminalidad, may marahas na krimen na nagaganap, ay makakahanap ng batayan sa konstitusyon para magdeklara ng martial law. Hindi-hindi po maaring mapahintulutan na ipasok ang lawless violence bilang batayan para sa deklarasyon ng martial law, Mister Speaker. Kaya dapat po mariing tangihan, i-reject ng kongpresong ito ang napakapeligrosong mukahi ng sponsor, Mister Speaker.
The amendment presented by Honorable Tinio has not been accepted by the sponsor and by the majority. Sa lahat po ng sumasang ayon sa amendments ni Honorable Tinio, please say aye. Sa lahat ng tumututol at sumasama sa sponsor at sa majority, please say nay. The nays have it. Honorable Tinio, may I know if there are still, how many individual amendments you have?
Mister Speaker, I still have some, several very important amendments, particularly with respect to the economic provisions, Mister Speaker.
One minute suspension. Sessions is resumed, Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, may we greet some guests in the gallery. Let's start with the guests of the Honorable Salvador Doyle Lechon from the First District of Oriental Mindoro. They are Vice Governor Bonz Dolor and Board Member Ka Jojo Perez and the sixty Sangguyan Kabataan Representatives of the Municipality of Now Jan, First District of the Province of Oriental Mindoro.
Guests of Congressman Doyle Lechon, the Chairperson of the Committee on Justice, please rise. Mabubuhay po kayo, welcome sa House of Representatives.
May we also greet the members of the Pantawid UPA, the guests of Congressman Albi Benitez and Congressman Kit Belmonte.
Guests of Congressman Albi Benitez and Kit Belmonte, please rise. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, may also greet the guests of Congressman Pacquiao from Cianba Sarangani Province. They are Vice Mayor Danny Martinez, Counselor Jose Hulinganga, Counselor Jeric Santillana, Counselor Edwin Alonso, Sheila Corpus Municipal Engineer Alan J. Espanyol, Ronel Secadrón, and Mona Monica Amonila.
Guests of Congressman Will Pacquiao, please rise. Welcome to the House of Representatives.
Finally, Mister Speaker, may we greet the students of Saint Paul College of Quezon City, taking up Bachelor of Science in Entrepreneurship headed by Ms. Roxanne Sabim Bacalzo. They are guests of Representative Rodrigo Abellanosha from the Second District of Cebu.
Guests of Representative Bebop Abellanosha, please rise. Welcome to the House of Representatives.
May we again recognize Congressman Tinio for...
Session suspended.
Session suspended.
Sessions resumed. Honorable Tinio, you may now proceed to your next amendment.
Thank you Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker. One of, okay, my proposal is under article number eleven. Well, let me propose an omnibus amendment, Mister Speaker, that one of the controversial proposals contained in RBH number fifteen is for the inclusion of a college degree as a requirement for holding of public office, including appointment to constitutional commissions and other government bodies, Mister Speaker. And some of our colleagues who have, who were given the chance to interpolate, raised various objections to such a requirement. So I make an, I propose an omnibus amendment to delete the requirement for a college degree as a criteria for elected public officials as well as appointed public officials in the constitution, Mister Speaker.
What does the sponsor say?
We reject Mister Speaker.
What does the majority say?
Mister Speaker, I move to adopt the action taken by the sponsor and rejecting the proposal.
Mister Speaker...
The amendment has not been accepted.
I, I, I appeal to the body, Mister Speaker.
You have five minutes.
Mister Speaker, kahit mois mo dito sa proposed constitution, sa declaration of principles at state policies, sinasabi rito na layunin daw ang pagpapakalat ng pampolitikang kapangyarihan sa Mamamayan. Diffusion of political power and opportunities to serve in public office. Ngayon, 'yung pagdagdag po sa proposed konstitusyon na ito ng college degree bilang requirement, ay kabaligtaranon. Sa halip na ibinubukas sa mas nakararaming Mamamayan, ang pagkakataong makapaglingkod sa gobyerno ay lalong nilimitahan po ito. Sa madaling sabi, tawagin po nating elitista ang mga probisyong ito ng konstitusyon. Alam naman natin, nasa halos tatlong milyon na nasa, na tumapasok sa iba't-ibang antas ng basic education. Ang nakatutunglang po sa kolehiyo ay umaabot ng mahigit kumulang dalawang milyon. At sa dalawang milyon na yun, mga kalahati lang yan ang makakatapos ng kolehiyo taon-taon, Mister Speaker. So napakaliit na porsyento lamang po ng ating populasyon ang may college degree. Ibig sabihin, kung ipapasaang konstitusyon na ito, disqualified na po. Ang mahigit nobenta porsyento ng populasyon sa pagtakpo para sa public office o pagupo sa iba't-ibang mga mahahalagang government agencies, including constitutional commissions. Kaya Mister Speaker, again, dito tinanggal na ngayong pagbabawal sa political dynasties. Tinatanggal pa 'yung term limits. Ngayon, nagdadagdag pa ng elitistang requirement. Kaya kailangan pong i-reject ng kongpresong ito ang requirement para sa college degree, Mister Speaker.
The amendment presented by Honorable Tinio has not been accepted by the sponsor and by the majority. Sa lahat po ng sumasama o sumasang ayon sa amendment ni Honorable Tinio, please say aye. Sa lahat ng tumututol at sumasama sa mayuriya at sponsors na hindi pagtanggap nila sa amendment ni Honorable Tinio, please say nay. The nays have it. Next amendment, please.
Mister Speaker, magmumukahi po ako ng amendment sa article fifteen ng RBH number fifteen. Ito 'yung section on national economy and patrimony. Gagawin ko na, para mapabilis ang ating proseso, gagawin ko na namang po omnibus amendment.
Mister Speaker?
Yes, ang proposal ko po...
Mister Speaker, point of clarification. I'm sorry Congressman Tinio... Deputy Speaker Falcastro?
What, what's your, what's the... On the level of your proposed amendments, I have to intervene. What I understand Mister Speaker is that when the motion is omnibus motion, and if you are allowed by the chair to place an omnibus motion, you will have to state all proposed amendments in that omnibus motion. And failing to include any proposed amendments, you are then barred to propose further amendments. That is how this representation, Mister Speaker, understands omnibus motion. That's why it is called as omnibus motion. May I ask a ruling, Mister Speaker? May I ask a ruling, Mister Speaker?
One minute to special. Sessions resume. Deputy Speaker Fred Castro, you have the floor.
Mister Speaker, after intelligently and with calm having discussed the issue of omnibus motion, the nature of omnibus motion with the distinguished representative Antonio Tinio, this representation, Mister Chairman or Mister Speaker, withdraws my point of clarification.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Thank you, our distinguished veteran Deputy Speaker. Honorable Tinio, may proceed.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Thank you to the Honorable Castro. Mister Speaker, I would like to propose the following amendments on the matter of term limits. In RBH number 15, the limit of three consecutive terms for members of the Senate, members of the House, and officials of local government units, namely mayors, governors, and so on, the three-term limit has been removed, Mister Speaker. So, I propose that the language found in the current constitution...
Will you please state what particular article and section?
Yes, Mister Speaker. So, this is in Article... This would be inserted into Article 6, the Legislative Department. So... This would be Section 4 when it comes to the House, and Section 6 when it comes to the Senate. I would like to propose the inclusion of the following language. No member of the House of Representatives shall serve for more than three consecutive terms. And in the case of the Senate, similar language to the effect... For the Senate... That no member of the Senate shall serve for more than two consecutive terms, Mister Speaker.
What does the sponsor say?
We reject, Mister Speaker.
What does the majority say?
Mister Speaker, I move to adopt the action taken by the sponsor in rejecting those amendments.
Amendment had not been accepted?
Mister Speaker, again, I appeal. I object.
You have five minutes.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker, kaya nga po walang tiwala ang publiko, ang mamamayan, sa mga tangka, mula pa nung panahon ni Pangulong Ramos, hanggang panahon ni dating Pangulong Arroyo, hanggang sa kasalukuyan, sa mga tangkang pagbabago ng konstitusyon. Kasi palagi pong kakabit nito 'yung mga panukala na tanggalin 'yung provisyon sa kontra sa dynasty, tanggalin 'yung term limits, at iba pa. Malinaw sa taong bayan na self-serving ang mutibo rito. Gusto daw makapanatili ng mga nakaupo sa poder ng habang panahon. At kung aaprubahan po ang mga provisyon na ang resolution of both Houses number 15, na nagtatanggal ng term limits, ay gano'n na nga ang mangyayari. Magiging lifetime po ang mga elected positions, whether in the House or in the Senate or in local governments, 'yung mga mayor, mga gobernor, mga konsihal, mga provincial board members, and so on and so forth. Hindi po 'yan ang gusto ng ating taong bayan. Hindi rin po 'yan alinsunod sa mga prinsipyo na di umanoy nasa panukalang konstitusyon na ito. Dahil sinasabi dito, kailangan daw tiyakin na mapalaganap ang pagkakataong makapagsilbi sa gobyerno. Kapag tinanggal po 'yung term limits, ay unlinap po ang pagpapanatili sa poder ng mga nakaupo na sa puwesto. Ang mga dati ng pamilya, dati ng mga dynasty, dati ng mga muka ay magpapatuloy ng habang panahon. Hindi po tayo makakapayag dyan, kaya minumukha ko po na ibalik ang mga provisyon na naglalagay ng three-term limit sa elected public office, Mister Speaker. Ang amendment po ni Honorable Tinio ay hindi tinanggap ng sponsor at ng mayuriya. Sa lahat po ng sumasangayon sa amendment, Honorable Tinio, please say aye.
Aye!
Sa lahat ng tumututol at sumasama sa sponsor at sa mayuriya na hindi tanggapin ang amendment, Honorable Tinio, please say nay.
Nay!
The nays have it.
Honorable Tinio?
Mister Speaker, Article 14, National Economy and Patrimony. So, ang panukala ko po dahil sa unawaan namin, ay again, pagsasamasamahin ko na po. Minumukha ko po ang pagtanggal sa mga katagang such terms and conditions as may be provided by law, at saka unless otherwise provided by law. Matatagpuan po 'yan sa Section 2, Section 3, uh, Section 11. Uh, ng panukalang konstitusyon, minumukha ko po na tanggalin o id delete ang mga katagang ito.
What does the sponsor say?
We reject, Mister Speaker.
What does the majority say?
Mister Speaker, we adopt this standard of the sponsor in rejecting the amendment.
The amendment had not been accepted.
Mister Speaker, I object and appeal to the body.
You have five minutes.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker, simula pa po nung panahon ni dating Pangulong Ramos, ito na ang pinakapangunahing agenda ng mga tangkang baguhin ang konstitusyon, 'yung economic agenda. Ang gusto nila ay tanggalin 'yung mga tinatawag na nationalist, or sometimes nationally, sometimes protectionist ang banggit, na economic provisions ng konstitusyon. Ito po 'yung mga provisyon ng kasalukuyang konstitusyon under the article of National Economy and Patrimony na nagtatakda na ang yaman, ang likas yaman, at ang ekonomiya ng bansa ay kailangang nasa kontrol at pag-aari at pangunahing pinakikinabangan ng mga mamamayang Pilipino mismo. Kaya nga po meron mga provisyon dito kaugnay sa pagmamayari ng lupa, kaugnay sa pagkontrol at pakinabang sa likas yaman, natural resources, katubigan, karagatan, kagubatan, kabundukan, at iba pa. Ang pagkontrol sa mga strategikong sektor ng ekonomiya ay kailangang nasa kontrol ng Pilipino. At sa konstitusyon, ang sinasabi po matitiyak ang kontrol kung at least sixty percent ng isang korporasyon ay pag-aari ng mga Pilipino. Ngayon, sa panukala po ng RBH number 15, ay ipinapasok po ang mga qualifications sa mga provisyon na ito. Kaya pinapasok po 'yung mga salitang "under such terms and conditions as may be provided by law" or "unless otherwise provided by law." Sabisa po ng mga salitang ito ay maaari pong baliktarin, baliwalain o kontrahin ng kongreso sa hinaharap 'yung itinatakda ng konstitusyon. So, kung sinasabi ng konstitusyon, kailangan pag-aari ng Pilipino ang lupain ng Pilipinas, pero unless otherwise provided by law. Pag pinasa po ang konstitusyon na'to, pwede na pong magpasaang kongreso ng batas na nagsasabing pwede ng maging pag-aari ng mga dayuhan ang lupain ng Pilipinas. Hindi po ganyan ang ekonomiya na pakikinabangan ng mga Pilipino. Lalo pa po ngayon na nakaamba po at nangyayari na ang pag-aangki ng China sa malaking bahagi ng teritoryo natin sa West Philippine Sea. Ngayon pa po na pinag-usapan ng Malacanyang at ng China ang joint exploration para sa langis at natural gas sa West Philippine Sea. Kahit malinaw ang mga prohibisyon at limitation sa kasalukuyang konstitusyon. Pagbaguhin po 'yan, ay pwede na pong ariin at pakinabangan dahil pa one hundred percent ng dayuhan ang ating mga likas yaman, karagatan, lupain, at iba pa. Kailangang tutulan po natin ito, tinututulan ko po ito, kaya pinatatanggal ko po sa panukalang konstitusyon na ito, Mister Speaker.
Hindi po tinatanggap ng sponsor at ng mayuriya ang amendment, Honorable Tinio. Sa lahat ng sumasama sa amendment, Honorable Tinio, please say aye. Sa lahat ng tumututol at sumasama sa hindi pagtanggap ng mayuriya sa amendment, Honorable Tinio, please say nay.
Nay!
The nays have it. Honorable Tinio?
Mister Speaker, sa transitory provision po, patapos na po ako, Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker, ang concern po ng, well, ang mukha ko po ay sa Section 3, Article 17 ng RBH number 15, transitory provisions. Section 3 sabi dito, "The first national and local elections under this constitution to elect the president, vice president, senators, representatives, and local officials shall be on the second Monday of May 2022. They shall assume office at noon on June 30, 2022." Mister Speaker, I propose for the inclusion of the... Mister Speaker, I proposed the inclusion of the following provision. So, provided... Mister Speaker, provided that, well, baka sa styling... Mr. Speaker, provided that, well, baka sa styling pwede pong ma-bago ito, pero ang panukala po natin ay lagyan ng provision na nagtatakda na hindi maaring tumakbo sa ilalim ng bagong konstitusyon ang mga kasalukuyang nakaupo, 'yung mga incumbents, Mr. Speaker, para matiyak po.
What does the sponsor say?
We reject, Mr. Speaker.
What does the majority say?
Majority adopts the action in rejecting the amendments, Mr. Speaker.
Amendment not accepted.
Mr. Speaker, I object and appeal to the body.
You have five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, napakahalaga po na sa pagbabago o sa panukalang pagbabago ng ano bang konstitusyon, para pagkatiwalaan ito ng taong bayan, na malinaw at makita ng taong bayan na 'yung mga nagpapanukalan ng pagbabago ay hindi sila mismong makikinabang sa kanilang pinanunukala. Hey, ngayon nga po, tinatanggal 'yung dynasty, tinatanggal 'yung term limit, tapos mag-i-establish pa raw ng two-party system. Sino ang pangunahing makikinabang sa mga 'yan? 'Yung mga kasalukuyang nakaupo po. Kaya nga po, sa totoo lang, galit na galit ang maraming Pilipino at tanging mabaho na ang mga tangka, mula panahon ni Pangulong Ramos hanggang panahon ni dating Pangulong Arroyo, hanggang sa kasalukuyan sa mga tangkang baguhin ng konstitusyon. Dahil palagi pong nakikita kaagad ng mamamayan na self-serving, no? Ang mga panukalang ito, na kapag napasa ito, ay mananatili sa poder 'yung mga gumawa ng konstitusyon at sila ang pangunahing makikinabang sa mga pagbabago na kanilang itinulak. Kaya for the sake of the credibility, any credibility of this proposed constitution, kailangan pong maglagay ng provision na nagbabawal sa mga incumbent na makinabang sa mga provision na narito. Kasama po at unang-una na 'yung mga konggresista na nais magpasa ng panukalang ito. 'Yun ang dahilan kung bakit pinapadagdag ko po ang provision barring incumbents from benefiting from running in any election under this constitution, Mr. Speaker.
The amendment proposed by Honorable Tinio have not been accepted by the sponsor and by the majority. Those who are in favor to the amendment presented by Honorable Tinio, please say aye. Those who are against and for the stand of the majority and the sponsor, please say nay. The nay is have it.
Maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker. 'Yun lamang po ang aking mga amendments.
Marami pong salamat, Honorable Tinio. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize the Honorable Chiquitinsagabaria for his individual amendment.
Honorable Sagabaria is recognized for his individual amendment.
Good afternoon, Mr. Speaker. A point of inquiry, Mr. Speaker. As I was listening moments ago, ah, on section twenty-two.
Ah, may I remind the Honorable gentleman that we are on the period of individual amendments?
Okay, so, Mr. Chair, thank you very much. Ah, moments ago, as I was listening to the amendments of Honorable Tinio, on section twenty-two, genuine agrarian reform was introduced on line twenty-two. This representation thinks otherwise. So, at this point, Mr. Chair, I would like to inquire if the proponent of such has divided the house for the approval of such incorporation on section twenty-two.
Okay, Mr. Chair. Sessions resume. Honorable Sagabaria?
Okay, Mr. Chair. This representation would like to remove on section twenty-two genuine agrarian reform. For the record, Mr. Chair.
I accept, Mr. Speaker. What does the sponsor say?
Accept.
What does the majority say?
Mr. Speaker, we adopt the action of the sponsor in accepting the amendment.
Any objection? The chair is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, it appears that there are no more members who wish to introduce individual amendments.
Any objection? The chair is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I now move that resolution of both houses number fifteen be approved on second reading.
Those who are for resolution of both houses of Congress number fifteen, please say, as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who are again, please say nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it. Majority leader, ah, resolution of both houses of fifteen of Congress as amended is now approved on second reading. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, um, I move that for the consideration on third reading of House Bill eight-five-four-one, and for this purpose, may request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the measure and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
Any objection? The chair is none. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of House Bill eight-five-four-one for consideration and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting on third reading.
House Bill eight-five-four-one, an act establishing the Philippine space development and utilization policy and creating the Philippine Space Agency, defining for the purpose and scope of its activities and appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill eight-five-four-one. Abaya, Abayon, Abelianosa, Abu, Abuega, Chiron, Akop, Acosta, Acosta, Alba, Adyong, Advincula, Agraw, Agabao, Albano, Alcala, Aleano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez, Franz, Alvarez, Francides, Alvarez, Patalyon, Amate, Amatong, Andaya, Angara, Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino, Magsaysay, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsens, Amentado, Bagao, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barber, Bersaga, Batawin, Batokabe, Bautista, Bendigan, Belaro, Belmonte, Feliciano, Belmonte, Señez, Belmonte, Ricardo, Binites, Bernos, Bertiz, Biazón, Bilyones, Brion, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Anthony, Bravo, Maravida, Rosas, Pulit, Bigtang, Cagas, Calderón, Calixtrobiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Castro, Franz, Castro, Fredilín, Katamco, Kayetano, Celestes, Rafica, Siriles, Chávez, Chipeco, Co, Cuánco, Coliantes, Cortés, Fortuna, Cosalan, Cusologo, Kuak, Juarezma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, Deus, Devenesia, Defensor, Delmar, Delusario, Delusmontalia, Demoporo, Abdullah, Demoporo, Muhammad Khalid, Duavit, Durano, Di, Ilago, Enverga, Erise, Eregel, Ermita, Buhan, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Josebio, Eberdone, Faríneas, Fernando, Ferrer, Juliet, Ferrer, Luis, Freol, Florendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Puentebella, Garbin, Gárcez, García, Guendolin, García, Huse, Enrique, García, Albano, Garin, Oscar, Grincharon, Gassetaya, Gachalian, Neron, Go, Ana Cristina, Go, Mark, Gómez, Gonzaga, González, Alexandria, González, Fernando, Rosetta, Gulyas, Hernández, Ferdinand, Hernández, Paul, Herrera, Di, Hofer, Halussoz, Javier, Co, Kunhun, Labadlabad, Laxson, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lasatin, Liachon, Lilim, Kaychong, Lobrigat, López, Benher, López, Carlo, López, Manuel, Leola, Makapagalaroy, Maseda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magundadato Suarto, Magundadato Sajin, Marcoletta, Marcos, Marinho, Marquez, Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Navanieto, Noel, Nograles, Nolasco, Núñez, Malanyahon, Uminal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega, Pablo, Ortega, Vininola, Pakiau, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Paganibang, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primisias, Agabaski, Boradasa, Ramiro, Sato, Ramos, Olapagos, Ribilia, Ropuno, Robes, Rocomora, Rodríguez, Isidro, Rodríguez, Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo, Roques, Actalan, Sagabaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbang, Salo, Salon, Sanbar, Sandoval, Sangkapán, Santos, Rector, Sarmiento, Cesar, Sarmiento, Edgar, Mary, Savillano, Semas, Silberio, Singson, Swansing, Estralita, Swansing, Horacio, Suárez, Si, Alvarado, Tambutin, Tan, Angeli, Tan, Milagrosa, Tan, Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tinio, Tolentino, Trenya, Stugna, Tupasti, Umali, Unabia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui, Juliet, Ui, Rolando, Ui, Barreta, Vargas, Vargas, Alfonso, Bilarde, Bilasco, Bilasco, Cartera, Biloso, Vergara, Billa Fuerte, Billa Nueva, Billa, Billa, Suárez, Billa, Rica, Billa, Rin, Wilago, Yap, Arthur, Yap, Milencho, Yap, Victor, Yu, Zamora, Maria Carmen, Zamora, Ronaldo, Zarate, Zubiri.
With two hundred seven affirmative votes, no negative votes, no abstention, House Bill eight-five-four-one is approved on third reading. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, may we acknowledge the guests of Congressman Wes Gachalian, the officers and members of the Liga ng Mga Barangay in Valenzuela City.
The officers and members of Liga ng Mga Barangay in Valenzuela City, guest of Honorable Wes Gachalian is recognized. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill eight-five-five-three. For this purpose, may request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection? The chair is none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of House Bill eight-five-five-three and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting on third reading.
House Bill eight-five-five-three, an act prescribing the mechanisms to facilitate the disposition of idle government-owned lands for socialized housing. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill eight-five-five-three. Abaya, Abayon, Abelianosa, Abu, Abuega, Chiron, Akop, Acosta, Acosta, Alba, Adyong, Advincula, Agraw, Agabao, Albano, Alcala, Aleano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez, Franz, Alvarez, Masedes, Alvarez, Patalyon, Amate, Amatong, Andaya, Angara, Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino, Magsaysay, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsens, Amentado, Bagao, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barber, Bersaga, Batawin, Batokabe, Bautista, Bendigan, Belaro, Belmonte, Feliciano, Belmonte, Señez, Belmonte, Ricardo, Binites, Bernos, Bertiz, Biazón, Bilyones, Brion, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Anthony, Bravo, Maravida, Rosas, Pulit, Bigtang, Cagas, Calderón, Calixtrobiano.
Mr. Speaker, my vote is no, and please allow me to explain my vote later.
Okay.
Calixtrobiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Castro, Franz, Castro, Fredilín, Katamco, Kayetano, Celestes, Rafica, Siriles, Chávez, Chipeco, Co, Cuánco, Coliantes, Cortés, Fortuna, Cosalan, Cusologo, Kuak, Juarezma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, Deus, Devenesia, Defensor, Delmar, Delusario, Delusmontalia, Demoporo, Abdullah, Demoporo, Muhammad Khalid, Duavit, Durano, Di, Ilago, Enverga, Erise, Eregel, Ermita, Buhan, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Josebio, Eberdone, Faríneas, Fernando, Ferrer, Juliet, Ferrer, Luis, Freol, Florendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Puentebella, Garbin, Gárcez, García, Guendolin, García, Huse, Enrique, García, Albano, Garin, Oscar, Grincharon, Gassetaya, Gachalian, Heron, Go, Ana Cristina, Go, Mark, Gómez, Gonzaga, González, Alexandria, González, Fernando, Rosetta, Gulyas, Hernández, Ferdinand, Hernández, Paul, Herrera, Di, Hofer, Halussoz, Javier, Co, Kunhun, Labadlabad, Laxson, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lasatin, Liachon, Lilim, Kaychong, Lobrigat, López, Benher, López, Carlo, López, Manuel, Leola, Makapagalaroy, Maseda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magundadato Suarto, Magundadato Sajin, Marcoletta, Marcos, Marinho, Marquez, Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Navanieto, Noel, Nograles, Nolasco, Núñez, Malanyahon, Uminal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega, Pablo, Ortega, Vininola, Pakiau, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Paganibang, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primisias, Agabaski, Boradasa, Ramiro, Sato, Ramos, Olapagos, Ribilia, Ropuno, Robes, Rocomora, Rodríguez, Isidro, Rodríguez, Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo, Roques, Actalan, Sagabaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbang, Salo, Salon, Sanbar, Sandoval, Sangkapán, Santos, Rector, Sarmiento, Cesar, Sarmiento, Edgar, Mary, Savillano, Semas, Silberio, Singson, Swansing, Estralita, Swansing, Horacio, Suárez, Si, Alvarado, Tambutin, Tan, Angeli, Tan, Milagrosa, Tan, Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tinio, Tolentino, Trenya, Stugna, Tupasti, Umali, Unabia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui, Juliet, Ui, Rolando, Ui, Barreta, Vargas, Vargas, Alfonso, Bilarde, Bilasco, Bilasco, Cartera, Biloso, Vergara, Billa Fuerte, Billa Nueva, Billa, Suárez, Billa, Rica, Billa, Rin, Wilago, Yap, Arthur, Yap, Milencho, Yap, Victor, Yu, Zamora, Maria Carmen, Zamora, Ronaldo, Zarate, Zubiri.
With two hundred two affirmative votes, five negative votes, zero abstention, House Bill eight-five-five-three is approved on third reading. Honorable Elago is recognized.
Mr. Speaker, may I know if we have call room?
What's the pleasure of Honorable T?
May I know if we have call room?
Session suspended. Sessions resume.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration.
Before the motion, may I recognize Honorable Rosas for her explanation of vote?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, ang pagpapakiete ng panukalang batas na ito ay maaring makalito at maari pang makapannilang. Mr. Speaker, no ang boto ng kinatawang ito sa House Bill eight-five-five, eight-five-five-three dahil gagamitin lamang ito ng mga private companies upang magkam-kam ng lupa na dapat sana ay para sa pambahay. Bakit ko po nasabi yun? Sa section eight of the House Bill eight-five-five-three, it states that "To encourage private sector and NGO participation in socialized housing projects described in section seven hereof, the incentives provided in section twenty of RA seventy-two-seventy-nine, otherwise known as Urban Development and Housing Act of nineteen ninety-two, on incentives for private sector participation in socialized housing shall apply." So, Urban Development and Housing Act of nineteen ninety-two, o RA seventy-two-seventy-nine palamang, ay exempted na ang private sector sa pagbabayad ng capital gains tax on raw lands na gagamitin sa lahat ng proyekto. Value-added tax para sa project contractor concern. Transfer tax for both raw completed projects and donors' tax for lands certified ng LGU donated for socialized housing purposes. Sa incentives na ito palang, mas mapapadalhin na para sa private companies na kumita habang ang monthly housing amortization ay patuloy na nagpapahirap sa million-milyong low-income homeless families. Halimbawa na lamang dito ay ang Bistecville unit na kung saan wala ng required down payment, pero ang monthly amortization ay two thousand two hundred seventy-three point eighty-four. pero ang monthly amortization ay 2,273.84 pesos per month over a period of thirty years babayaran. Malinaw na ang House Bill 8553 ay ganan siya para sa mga developers at hindi para sa mga pamilyang halos wala ng matirhan. Maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill 8590. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the measure and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting.
Any objection? The Chair is none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of House Bill 8590 and thereafter, call the roll of members for nominal voting on third reading. House Bill 8590, an act declaring the first day of February of every year as National Hijab Day. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill 8590. Abaya, Abayon, Abellianosa, Abu, Abuega, Chiron, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Jong, Advincula, Agaraw, Agabaw, Albano, Alkala, Alehano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magsaysay, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsienza, Mentado, Bagaw, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barber's, Bersaga, Batawin, Batokabe, Bautista Bendigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Señ Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biason, Bilyones, Brion, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Maria Vida, Brosas, Bulut, Bigtang, Kagas, Calderon, Calixtorbiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casilaw, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Katamco, Cayetano, Celeste, Serafica, Siriles, Chavez, Chipeco, Co, Cuanko, Coliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Costelan, Crisologo, Kuak, Juarezma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Del Mar, Del Rosario, Del Osomontalia, Dimaporo Abdulla, Dimaporo Muhammad Khalid, Duavit, Durano, Di, Ilago, Inverga, Erise, Erigel, Armita Buahin, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Eberdone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Feriol, Florendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Puentebella, Garbin, Garcés, García Guendolin, García Jose Enrique, García Albano, Garin Oscar, Garin Sharon, Gastaya, Gachalian, Heron, Go Ana Cristina, Go Mark, Gómez, Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Aurelio, González Fernando, Gorseta, Gulyas, Hernández Ferdinand, Hernández Paul, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halusso, Xavierco, Kunuhun, Labad Labad, Laxson, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lasatin, Liatson, Li, Limcaichong, Lobrigat, López Ben Hur, López Carlo, López Manuel, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magundadato Suarto, Magundadato Sajid, Marcoleta, Marcos Marinho, Marquez, Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyao, Ominal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vininola, Pakiau, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primisias Agabas, Kimbor, Radasa, Ramiro Sato, Ramos, Olapagos, Rribilla, Roapuno, Robes, Rocomora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangan, Salo, Salón, San Bar, San Doval, San Copan, Santos Repto, Sarmiento César, Sarmiento Edgar Mary, Sabillano, Semas, Yauz, Silberio, Singson, Swansing, Estrudita, Swansing, Horacio, Suárez, Si Alvarado, Tambuntin, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tinio, Tolentino, Trenya, Stugna, Tupas, Di, Umalí, Unabia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Bareta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Bilarde, Bilasco, Bilasco Cartera, Biloso, Vergara, Billa Fuerte, Billa Nuevo, Billa Rasa Suárez, Billa Rica, Billa Rin, Villago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milencia, Yap Victor Yu, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate Zubiri. With two hundred eight affirmative votes, no negative votes, no abstention, House Bill 8590 is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration of third reading, House Bill Number 8628. And for this purpose, may I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and therefore, to call the roll for nominal voting.
Any objection? The Chair is none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of House Bill 8628 thereafter, call the roll of members for nominal voting on third reading. House Bill 8628, an act transferring the Philippine National Police Academy and the National Police Training Institute from the Philippine Public Safety College to the Philippine National Police, amending for the purpose Sections 24, 35, 66, and 67 of Republic Act Number 6975, otherwise known as the Department of the Interior and Local Government Act of 1990, as amended. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill 8628. Abaya, Abayon, Abellianosa, Abu, Abuega, Chiron, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Jong, Advincula, Agaraw, Agabaw, Albano, Alkala, Alehano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magsaysay, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsienza, Aumentado, Bagaw, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barber's, Bersaga, Batawin, Batokabe, Bautista Bendigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biason, Bilyones, Brion, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Maria Vida, Brosas, Bulut, Bigtang, Kagas, Calderon, Calixtorbiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casilaw, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Katamco, Cayetano, Celeste, Serafica, Siriles, Chavez, Chipeco, Co, Juanco, Coliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Costelan, Crisologo, Kuak, Juarezma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Del Mar, Del Rosario, Del Osomontalia, Dimaporo Abdulla, Dimaporo Muhammad Khalid, Duavit, Durano, Di, Ilago, Inverga, Erise, Erigel, Armita Buahin, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Eberdone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Feriol, Florendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Puentebilla, Garbin, Garcés, García Guendolin, García Jose Enrique, García Albano, Garin Oscar, Garin Sharon, Gastaya, Gachalian, Heron, Go Ana Cristina, Go Mark, Gómez, Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Aurelio, González Fernando, Gorseta, Gulyas, Hernández Ferdinand, Hernández Paul, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halussoz, Javier, Ku, Kunuhun, Labad Labad, Laxson, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lasatin, Liatson, Li, Limcaichong, Lobrigat, López Ben Hur, López Carlo, López Manuel Luis, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magundadato Suarto, Magundadato Sajid, Marcoleta, Marcos Marinho, Marquez, Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyao, Ominal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vininola, Pakiau, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primisias Agabas, Kimbor, Radasa, Ramiro Sato, Ramos, Olapagos, Rribilla, Roapuno, Robes, Rocomora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangan, Salo, Salón, San Bar, San Doval, San Copan, Santos Repto, Sarmiento César, Sarmiento Edgar Mary, Sabillano, Semas, Yauz, Silberio, Singson, Swansing, Estrudita, Swansing, Horacio, Suárez, Si Alvarado, Tambuntin, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tinio, Tolentino, Trenya, Stugna, Tupas, Di, Umalí, Unabia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Bareta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Bilarde, Bilasco, Bilasco Cartera, Biloso, Vergara, Billa Fuerte, Billa Nuevo, Billa Rasa Suárez, Billa Rica, Billa Rin, Villago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milencia, Yap Victor Yu, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate Zubiri. With two hundred members voted on affirmatives, no negative votes, no abstention, House Bill 8628 is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration of third reading of House Bill Number 8630. For this purpose, may I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and call the roll for nominal voting.
Any objection? The Chair is none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of House Bill 8630 and thereafter, call the roll of members for nominal voting on third reading. House Bill 8630, an act renewing for another twenty-five years the franchise granted to ABC Development Corporation, presently known as TV5 Network Incorporated under Republic Act Number 7831 entitled "An Act Granting ABC Development Corporation Under The Business Name Associated Broadcasting Company, A Franchise To Construct, Install, And Operate, And Maintain Radio And Television Broadcasting Stations In The Philippines." Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill 8630. Abaya, Abayon, Abellianosa, Abu, Abuega, Chiron, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Jong, Advincula, Agaraw, Agabaw, Albano, Alkala, Alehano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magsaysay, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsienza, Mentado, Bagaw, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barber's, Bersaga, Batawin, Batokabe, Bautista Bendigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Señ Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biason, Bilyones, Brion, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Maria Vida, Brosas, Bulut, Bigtang, Kagas, Calderon, Calixtorbiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casilaw, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Katamco, Cayetano, Celeste, Serafica, Siriles, Chavez, Chipeco, Co, Cuanko, Coliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Costelan, Crisologo, Kuak, Juarezma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Del Mar, Del Rosario, Del Osomontalia, Dimaporo Abdulla, Dimaporo Muhammad Khalid, Duavit, Durano, Di, Ilago, Inverga, Erise, Erigel, Armita Buahin, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Eberdone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Feriol, Florendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Puentebella, Garbin, Garcés, García Guendolin, García Jose Enrique, García Albano, Garin Oscar, Garin Sharon, Gastaya, Gachalian, Heron, Go Ana Cristina, Go Mark, Gómez, Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Aurelio, González Fernando, Gorseta, Gulyas, Hernández Ferdinand, Hernández Paul, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halussoz, Xavierco, Kunuhun, Labad Labad, Laxson, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lasatin, Liatson, Li, Limcaichong, Lobrigat, López Ben Hur, López Carlo, López Manuel, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magundadato Suarto, Magundadato Sajid, Marcoleta, Marcos Marinho, Marquez, Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyao, Ominal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vininola, Pakiau, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primisias Agabas, Kimbor, Radasa, Ramiro Sato, Ramos, Olapagos, Rribilla, Roapuno, Robes, Rocomora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangan, Salo, Salón, San Bar, San Doval, San Copan, Santos Repto, Sarmiento César, Sarmiento Edgar Mary, Sabillano, Semas, Yauz, Silberio, Singson, Swansing, Estrudita, Swansing, Horacio, Suárez, Si Alvarado, Tambuntin, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tinio, Tolentino, Trenya, Stugna, Tupas, Di, Umalí, Unabia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Bareta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Bilarde, Bilasco, Bilasco Cartera, Biloso, Vergara, Billa Fuerte, Billa Nuevo, Billa Rasa Suárez, Billa Rica, Billa Rin, Villago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milencia, Yap Victor Yu, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate Zubiri. With two hundred seven affirmative votes, one negative votes, vote, zero abstention, House Bill 8630 is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration of third reading of House Bill Number 8633. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and call for nominal voting.
Any objection? The Chair is none. The motion is approved. House Bill 8633. House Bill 8633. Please, the Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of House Bill 8633 and thereafter, call the roll of members for nominal voting on third reading. House Bill 8633, an act renewing for another twenty-five years the franchise granted to Ultimate Entertainment Incorporated under Republic Act Number 18102 entitled "An Act Granting Ultimate Entertainment Incorporated, The Franchise To Construct, Install, Maintain, And Operate Radio Broadcasting Stations Within The Philippines." Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill 8633. Abaya, Abayon, Abellianosa, Abu, Abuega, Chiron, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Jong, Advincula, Agaraw, Agabaw, Albano, Alkala, Alehano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magsaysay, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsienza, Aumentado, Bagaw, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barber's, Bersaga, Batawin, Batokabe, Bautista Bendigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biason, Bilyones, Brion, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Maria Vida, Brosas, Bulut, Bigtang, Kagas, Calderon, Calixtorbiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casilaw, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Katamco, Cayetano, Celeste, Serafica, Siriles, Chavez, Chipeco, Co, Co, Juanco, Coliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Costelan, Crisologo, Kuak, Juarezma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Del Mar, Del Rosario, Del Osomontalia, Dimaporo Abdulla, Dimaporo Muhammad Khalid, Duavit, Durano, Di, Ilago, Inverga, Erise, Erigel, Armita Buahin, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Eberdone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Feriol, Florendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Puentebella, Garbin, Garcés, García Guendolin, García Jose Enrique, García Albano, Garin Oscar, Garin Sharon, Gastaya, Gachalian, Heron, Go Ana Cristina, Go Mark, Gómez, Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Aurelio.
Mr. Speaker.
Ah yes, Congresswoman Viallo.
A motion to adjourn the session.
We are in the process of voting. We are in the process of voting. Go Ana Cristina, Go Mark, Gómez, Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Aurelio, González Fernando, Gorseta, Gulyas, Hernández Ferdinand, Hernández Paul, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halussoz, Javier, Ku, Kunuhun, Labad Labad, Laxson, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lasatin, Liatson, Li, Limcaichong, Lobrigat, López Ben Hur, López Carlo, López Manuel Luis, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magundadato Suarto, Magundadato Sajid, Marcoleta, Marcos Marinho, Marquez, Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyao, Ominal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vininola, Pakiau, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primisias Agabas, Kimbor, Radasa, Ramiro Sato, Ramos, Olapagos, Rribilla, Roapuno, Robes, Rocomora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangan, Salo, Salón, San Bar, San Doval, San Copan, Santos Repto, Sarmiento César, Sarmiento Edgar Mary, Sabillano, Semas, Yauz, Silberio, Singson, Swansing, Estrudita, Swansing, Horacio, Suárez, Si Alvarado, Tambuntin, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tinio, Tolentino, Trenya, Stugna, Tupas, Di, Umalí, Unabia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Bareta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Bilarde, Bilasco, Bilasco Cartera, Biloso, Vergara, Billa Fuerte, Billa Nuevo, Billa Rasa Suárez, Billa Rica, Billa Rin, Villago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milencia, Yap Victor Yu, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate Zubiri. With two hundred nine affirmative votes, no negative votes, no abstention, House Bill 8633 is approved on third reading. Session suspended. Session resume.
Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill 8511. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the measure and thereafter, to call the roll for nominal voting.
Any objection? The Chair is none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of House Bill 8511 and thereafter, call the roll of members for nominal voting on third reading. House Bill 8511, an act separating the city of Mandawe from the sixth legislative district of the province of Cebu to constitute the lone legislative district. of the province of Cebu to constitute the lone legislative district of the city of Mandawe. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill 8511. Abaya, Abayon, Abelianosa, Abu, Abueg, Atcheron, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agaraw, Agabaw, Albano, Alkala, Alehano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magcaysay, Aragones, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atiensa, Mentado, Bagaw, Bagatsing, Bagilat, Banal, Barbers, Bersaga, Batawin, Batokabe, Bautista Bendigan, Bilaro, Belmonte Fleschiano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biason, Bilyones, Brion, Bolilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Maria Vida, Brosas, Bulit Big Tang, Kagas, Calderon, Calixtrobiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casilaw, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Pedenil, Katamco, Kayatanos, Celeste, Serafica, Siriles, Chavez, Chipeco, Ko, Kojuanco, Culyantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Casalan, Crusologo, Kuak, Juarezma, Cueva, Dalipet, Datol, Dasa, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Del Mar, Del Rosario, Del Osomontalia, Demopor Abdulla, Demopor Mohamed Khalid, Duavit Durano, Di Ilago, Inverga, Erise, Ergel, Armita Buah, Escudero, Espina, Espino Estrella, Eusebio Ibardone, Farinyas, Fernando, Ferrajuliet, Ferrer Luis, Ferriol, Florendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Puentebelia, Garbin, Garcys, Garcia Gwendolin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Albano, Garin Oscar, Garin Charon, Gastaya, Gachalian, Herongo, Ana Cristina, Go Mark, Gomez Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Fernando, Grosetta, Gulyas, Hernandez Ferdinand, Hernandez Paul, Herrera D, Hofer, Halusso, Javier Co, Kunjun Labad Labad, Laxon, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lasatin, Lia Chon, Li, Lemkaychong, Lobrigat, Lopez Benher, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuel, Loyola, Makapagalaroy, Maseda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magudadato Suarto, Magudadato Sa Jit, Marco Leta, Marcos Marinho, Marquez Martinez, Matugas Miliana, Mending Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Navanyeto, Noel, Nograles, Lasko, Nunez Malanyao, Ominal, Okapo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Pininola, Pakiau Padwano, Palma, Pancho, Panganibang, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pico, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primisias Agabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Lampago, Sibilia, Ropapuno, Robes, Rocomora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaryas, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangan, Salo, Salon, San Bar, San Doval, San Copan, Santos Rektos, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar Merrick, Sibilianos, Semasiaw, Silberio, Singson, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Rasjo, Suarez Si Alvarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tinyo, Tolentino, Trenya, Stugna, Tupas, Ti, Umalie, Unabia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Julret, Ui Rolando, Ui Bareta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Villarde, Villasco, Villasco Cartera, Veloso, Vergara, Billa Fuerte, Billa Nueva, Billa Rasa Suarez, Billa Rica, Billa Rin, Vilago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milensio, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate Zubiri.
Mr. Chair.
With two hundred and nine affirmative votes, no negative votes, no abstention, House Bill 8511 is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Uh, Mr. Speaker.
Ah yes, Congresswoman Viologo. What's the pleasure?
Uh, motion for reconsideration to recall House Bill 8633 that approved for third reading uh because of lack of corum.
What does the majority say?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, may I just ask the gentlewoman from Nueva Ecija how she voted on House Bill 8630?
I voted for no.
Um, for that, Mr. Speaker, we invoke Section 103 that those who voted no for any House Bill cannot use move for reconsideration. And if I, if I may read Section 103, "When a measure, report or motion is approved, adopted or lost, a member who voted with the majority may move for its reconsideration on the same or succeeding session day. Only one motion for reconsideration shall be allowed. The motion for reconsideration shall take precedence over all other questions except a motion to adjourn, a point of order, a question of privilege and a motion to declare a recess. A bill, resolution, memorial or petition recommitted to committee or ordered to be printed shall not be brought back to the House in a motion to reconsider."
The motion presented by Honorable Viologo is no's. Not accepted. Session suspended.
Mr. Speaker. 8630. Third reading, took us in third reading. There's a second reading. Second reading. I'm gonna, I'm gonna say. Oh, you're gonna say? I'm gonna say third reading. I know. I'm gonna say third reading. I'm gonna say third reading. Second, second, third.
Sessions resume. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, may we recognize, acknowledge the guest of the Honorable Gavini Appol Pancho. They are the Grade Ten students from Immaculate Conception School of Baliwag, Baliwag Bulakan.
Guest of Honorable Appol Pancho, may I say, recognize, may I say? Welcome to the House of Representatives. Napakarami, pare, napakarami. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, under the calendar of business, may we consider House Bill Number... House Bill Number 8627 and direct the Secretary General to read the title of the bill.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of House Bill 8627 and thereafter 8627 for consideration on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, may we recognize the gentle lady from Bi Sema for her sponsorship speech.
Uh, what's the parliamentary status? Majority Leader.
Um, it's... We're calling, we're acknowledging the Honorable Bi Sema for her sponsorship speech.
The Honorable Bi, Honorable Bi Sema? House Bill 8627, "An Act Requiring Hospitals, Medical Clinics and Other Facilities to Release a Cadaver in Their Possession Within Twenty-Four Hours From Time of Death to the Family or Relatives in Recognition of Religious Practices and Traditions," amending for the purpose of Republic Act Number 9439 entitled, "An Act Prohibiting the Detention of Patients in Hospital and Medical Clinics on Grounds of Non-Payment of Hospital Bills or Medical Expenses." Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the representative from the First District of Magindanao with Corbaro City, Honorable Bi Sandra Sema Sinsoat for her sponsorship speech.
The Honorable Representative from the First District of Magindanao, Honorable Bi Sema, is recognized to sponsor House Bill 8627.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. May I move that the explanatory note of House Bill Number 8627 under Committee Report Number 937 be considered as the sponsorship speech? Thank you.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of interpolation.
Majority Leader, uh, there's a motion coming from the sponsor that the explanatory note be adopted as her sponsorship speech. Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The explanatory note of House Bill 8627 is adapted as the sponsorship speech. Majority Leader.
Again, Mr. Speaker, I reiterate my motion. I move that we open the period of interpolation.
Any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there are no being member who wishes to interpolate. I move that we close the period of interpolation.
Any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Any ob-
I move that we open the period of spons-, of amendments.
Amendments. Any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there are no being member who wishes to, um, introduce his amendments or individual amendments. I move that we close the period of amendments.
The individual and the comit-, as well as the committee amendments? Any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill Number... 8627, Mr. Speaker.
Those who are for House Bill 8627, please say aye. Those who are against, please say nay. The ayes have it, House Bill 8627 is approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Speaker, um, I move that we consider House Resolution Number 2307 and direct the Secretary General to move, to read the title of the measure.
Please repeat. Resolution?
2307.
2307. Any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of Resolution 2307 for consideration, for adoption.
House Resolution 2307, "Resolution Urging the House of Representatives to Require the Appearance and Participation of Department of Budget Management Secretary Benjamin Diokno in Question Hour Regarding the Twenty-Nineteen Election Budget."
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adopt the resolution.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Resolution 2307 is being adopted. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider on second reading, House Bill 8667 and request the Secretary General to read the title of the measure.
Any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of House Bill 8667 for consideration on second reading.
House Bill 8667, "An Act Granting the Basis Conversion Development Authority of Franchise to Construct, Install, Establish, Operate, Own, Manage and Maintain Distribution Systems for the Conveyance of Electric Power to End Users Anywhere in All Areas Covered under Republic Act Number 7227 as amended, otherwise known as the Basis Conversion and Development Act of 1992."
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, um, I move that we recognize the Chairperson of the Legislative Franchises, Representative Alvarez, to sponsor the measure.
Any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved. Representative Alvarez, recognized to sponsor House Bill 8667.
Mr. Speaker, may I request that the explanatory note be entered as the sponsorship speech.
Objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the, um, period of interpolation and debates.
Any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate, we close the period of interpolation and debates.
Any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, may we recognize Deputy Speaker Hernandez for his amendments.
The Deputy Speaker, uh, Ferdinand Hernandez, recognized for his individual amendment.
Mr. Speaker, if the sponsor would like to... I would like to introduce amendments on House Bill 8667 if the sponsor is amendable.
What does the sponsor say?
Yes, sir, amendable, Mr. Speaker.
What does the majority say?
If there is no objection from the sponsor and the author, we accept the proposed amendment.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. Amendments accepted.
May I read the proposed amendments, Mr. Speaker. Uh, on page two, line one, after the word grantee, delete the word under and replace it with the phrase "for suwan two." On the same page and line, after the word amended, insert the phrase "Excluding Areas Under the Subic Freeport and Economic Zone Formerly Known as the Subic Special Economic Zone" and delete the succeeding phrase "Including Subic and Clark Military Reservations." On the same page, delete line two to line five. On the same page, line nineteen, insert the acronym ERC after the word commission. On the same page, line twenty, after the acronym ERC, delete the phrase which has jurisdiction over the operation of the herein grantee. On page four, after line nine, insert a new paragraph to read as follows. On page 4, after line 9, insert a new paragraph to read as follows: "The exercise of the rights granted herein shall not result to stranded assets and stranded contract, cost of the existing and operating distribution utilities, nor to unreasonable increases in the cost to consumers." On page 7, line 6 to 7, delete the sentence starting from the word "provide" up to the word "limitations," and insert the following sentence: "Provided, comma, that the foregoing limitations shall not apply if the grantee shall transfer or assign this franchise or the rights and privileges acquired hereunder to its wholly owned subsidiaries and as contribution to the joint ventures, comma, of whatever nature and kind, comma, with any entity, comma, in accordance with applicable constitutional provisions, comma, laws, comma, rules, and regulations." And the title to read as follows: "An Act Granting the Basis Conversion and Development Authority a franchise to construct, comma, install, comma, establish, comma, operate, comma, own, comma, manage, and maintain distribution systems for conveyance of electric power to end users in all areas covered under Republic Act Number 7227, as amended, otherwise known as the Basis Conversion and Development Act of 1992, excluding areas under the Subic Special Freeport and Economic Zones."
What does the good sponsor say on the omnibus amendment presented by the Deputy Speaker Fernandez?
We accept all amendments, Mr. Speaker.
What does the majority say?
We move to accept the amendment.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The omnibus amendment presented by the Deputy Speaker Hernandez is adopted. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no more committee or individual amendments, I move, I close the period of committee and individual amendments.
Any objection? Hearing none. The period of individual and committee amendments is terminated. Majority Leader.
I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill 8667. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Those who are in favor on House Bill 8667, please say aye. As amended, please say aye. Those who are against, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 8667 is approved as amended on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adopt, or consider, House Resolution 1505, as contained in the Committee Report Number 967. And please direct the Secretary General to read the bill.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of Resolution 1505 for adoption.
House Resolution 1505. A resolution directing the proper House Committee to conduct inquiry in aid of legislation the apparent corruption and irregularities in the imposition, collection, and distribution of taxes and fees on acquiring operations in the province of Nueva Ecija and other provinces in the Philippines.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the adoption of the findings and recommendations contained in the Committee Report Number 967.
Those who are in favor to the report on House Resolution 1505, please say aye. Those who are against, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Resolution 1505 is adopted. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill Number 8683 and direct the Secretary General to read the title of the bill.
For consideration on second reading?
Yes, yes, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of House Bill 8683, for consideration on second reading.
House Bill 8683, an act lowering the optional retirement age of government workers from 60 years to 56 years, amending for the purpose Section 13A of Republic Act Number 8291, otherwise known as the Government Service Insurance Act of 1997.
The Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Representative Sakdalan for his sponsorship's speech.
The Chairperson of the Government Enterprise, Honorable Sakdalan, is recognized to sponsor House Bill 8683.
Mr. Speaker, may I submit the explanatory note and ask may sponsorship's speech be accepted?
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The explanatory note of House Bill 8683 will be the sponsorship's speech. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of interpolation.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. Period of interpolation is now open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being, there being none interpolators, may I move that we close the period of interpolation?
Any objection? Hearing none. The period of interpolation is closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of amendment is open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no other committee amendments, I move that we now proceed to the, for the individual, or, and the individual amendments. I move that we close the period of amendments.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of amendments, individual and committee, is now closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill Number 8683.
Those who are in favor on House Bill 8683, please say aye. Those who are against, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 8683 is approved on second reading.
Mr. Speaker, I move for suspension.
Session suspended. Sessions resume. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we proceed to consider House Bill Number 8668 and direct the Secretary General to read the title of the bill.
For consideration on second reading?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of House Bill 8668, for consideration on second reading.
House Bill 8668, an act renewing for another 25 years the franchise granted to Bin Kontuk Broadcasting Corporations under Republic Act Number 8116, entitled, "An Act Granting the Bin Kontuk Broadcasting Corporation a franchise to construct, install, operate, and maintain radio and television broadcasting stations within the Philippines and for other purposes."
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the gentleman, or the Chairman of Legislative Franchises, Representative Alvarez, for his sponsorship's speech.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Representative Chico Alvarez, recognized to sponsor House Bill 8668.
Mr. Speaker, may I enter the explanatory note as the sponsorship's speech?
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of interpolation.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no interpolators, may I move that we close the period of interpolation?
Any objection? The Chair hears none. Period of interpolation is closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of committee amendments or individual amendments.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. Period of individual and committee amendments is open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee and individual amendments, may I move, Mr. Speaker, that we close the period of amendments?
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of individual and committee amendments closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on, for second reading, House Bill Number 8668.
Those who are in favor on House Bill 8668, please say aye. Those who are against, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 8668, under Committee Report 969, is approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill Number, for second reading, House Bill Number 8670, and direct the Secretary General to read the title of the bill.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of House Bill 8670, under Committee Report 970, for consideration on second reading.
House Bill 8670, an act renewing for another 25 years the franchise granted to Suara Sub Media Corporation, under Republic Act 8122, entitled, "An Act Granting the Suara Sub Media Corporation of the Philippines, a franchise to construct, install, operate, and maintain for commercial purposes radio and television broadcasting stations in the Philippines and for other purposes."
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Congressman Alvarez for his sponsorship's speech.
The Chairperson of the Committee of Legislative Franchises, recognized to sponsor House Bill 8670.
Mr. Speaker, may I request that the explanatory note be entered as the sponsorship's speech?
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of interpolation.
Any objection? Hearing none. The period of interpolation is open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate, may I move that we close the period of interpolation?
Any objection? The Chair hears none. Period of interpolation is closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of individual and committee amendments is open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wishes to introduce individual amendments, I move that we close the period of individual amendments.
Any objection? The period of individual amendments is closed. How about the committee amendments?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we close the period of, ah, the, the period of committee amendments, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of committee amendments is closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote for second reading on House Bill Number 8670.
Those who are in favor for House Bill 8670, please say aye. Those who are against, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 8670, under Committee Report 970, is approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, under the unfinished business, may we consider House Bill Number 8179? I'm sorry. House Bill Number 7785 for approval on second reading. So, and direct the Secretary General to read the title of the bill.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of House Bill 7785, under Committee Report 765, for consideration on second reading.
House Bill 7785, an act establishing a framework for the selection of national performing arts companies designated for the purpose certain performing arts, genres, and appropriating funds therefore.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, the status of the bill is under the period of interpolation. There being no member, members who wishes to interpolate, I move that we close the period of interpolation.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of interpolation is closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of amendments is open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there are no being members who wishes to introduce individual amendments, committee amendments. I move that we close the individual committee amendments. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of committee and individual amendments is closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill Number 7785.
Those who are in favor on House Bill 7785, please say aye. Those who are against, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 7785 is approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, under the calendar of business, I move that we, um, take up, on second reading, House Bill Number 8691, and request the Secretary General to read the title of the bill.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of House Bill 8691, under Committee Report 981, for consideration on second reading.
House Bill 8691, an act granting the Davao International Airport Authority and providing funds therefore.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I, I move that we recognize the Honorable Representative Sakdalan for his sponsorship's speech.
The Honorable Chairperson of the Government Enterprises is recognized to sponsor House Bill 8691.
Mr. Speaker, the explanatory note be entered as my sponsorship's speech, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of interpolation.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. Period of interpolation is now open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there are no being member who wishes to interpolate. I move that we close the period of interpolations.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of interpolation is closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The period of amendments open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there are no being member who wishes to introduce amendments.
Amendment.
The...
May we recognize the Honorable Deputy Speaker Melan Garcia for his individual, to introduce her individual amendment?
The Deputy Speaker and the author of House Bill 8691 is recognized for her individual amendment.
Mr. Speaker, please allow me to introduce the following amendments. On page 4, line 7, after the word "sector," insert the phrase "to be appointed by the President of the Philippines for a term of four years, from a list of ten persons recommended by the Mayor of Davao City."
What does the sponsor say?
Accepted.
What does the majority say?
If, if the sponsor has no, we accept the amendments introduced.
Any objection from the body? Hearing none. Amendment accepted.
Mr. Speaker, on page 5, Section 7, line 2, after the acronym GCG enclosed in parentheses, insert the following: "Provided that officials and employees of the Davao International Airport Authority shall be exempted from the Salary Standardization Law."
What does the sponsor say? What does the majority say?
Mr. Speaker, we accept.
Any objection from the body? Hearing none. Amendment accepted. Any more amendments? Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no other members who wishes to introduce individual committee amendments, I move that we close the individual committee amendments.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of individual and committee amendments is closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill Number... 8691. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Those who are for House Bill 8691, please say aye. Those who are against, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 8691, under Committee Report 981, is approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, under our calendar of business... Señor presidente, bajo nuestro calendario de negocios, ¿podemos tratar ley 7856 y pedir al secretario general para leer el título del proyecto?
¿Alguna objeción? La presidenta, no. La motion es aprobada. El secretario general está dirigido para leer el título de ley 7856 bajo el reporte comité 998 para consideración en segunda lectura.
Ley 7856, un acto declarando el 8 de septiembre de cada año una fiesta laboral especial en todo el país para homenajear la fiesta de la natividad de la bendita Virgen María.
¿El líder de la mayoría?
Señor presidente, me movo a que reconozcamos al honorable Marlene Agabas de la provincia de Pangasinan por su discurso de patrocinio.
El presidente de la Comisión de Revisión de Lojas, el honorable Agabas, es reconocido para patrocinar ley 7856.
Señor presidente, muchas gracias. Señor presidente, me gustaría pedir que la notificación de explicación sea adaptada como discurso de patrocinio.
¿Alguna objeción? La presidenta, no, la motion es aprobada. ¿El líder de la mayoría?
Señor presidente, me movo a que abramos el periodo de interpelación.
¿Alguna objeción? La presidenta, no, el periodo de interpelación es abierto. ¿El líder de la mayoría?
Señor presidente, no hay miembro que desee interpelar. Me movo a que cierremos el periodo de interpelación.
¿Alguna objeción? La presidenta, no, el periodo de interpelación es cerrado. ¿El líder de la mayoría?
Señor presidente, me movo a que abramos el periodo de amendamientos.
¿Alguna objeción? La presidenta, no, el periodo de amendamientos es abierto. ¿El líder de la mayoría?
Señor presidente, no hay miembro que desee introducir amendamientos comités.
¿Alguna objeción? La presidenta, no.
Amendamientos individuales.
El periodo de amendamientos comités y individuales es cerrado. ¿El líder de la mayoría?
Señor presidente, me movo a que votemos en segunda lectura ley 97856. Así que movamos, señor presidente.
Los que están a favor de ley 7856 bajo el reporte comité 998, por favor, digan aye.
Aye.
Los que son en contra, por favor, digan no. Las ayes tienen razón, ley 7856 es aprobada en segunda lectura. ¿El líder de la mayoría?
Señor presidente, estamos en el sitio de un mensaje del Senado.
Señor presidente.
Informando a la Cámara.
Motion to adjourn, señor presidente.
¿Puedo terminar, señor presidente?
Sí, puede proceder.
Ha pasado el amendment, ley 5640.
Mi motion es motion to adjourn. Punto de orden, motion to adjourn. No tenemos ningún coro, señor presidente. Los que están a favor de adjornar, por favor, digan aye. Los que son en contra, por favor, digan no.
No.
The motion is lost. Eso no es parte del reglamento, señor presidente. De acuerdo con el reglamento, necesitamos tener un coro. Eso es parte del reglamento. No, señor presidente. ¿El líder de la mayoría? Objecho a eso, señor presidente.
Señor presidente, ¿puedo explicar? Antes de esta tarde, hemos establecido un coro. Ese coro permanece, señor presidente, a menos que esté verificado. No sabemos dónde están los otros miembros. Pueden estar en la oficina, pueden estar en el salón sur o el salón nocturno, pero tenemos que especular si tenemos un coro o no. Eso es solo una especulación, señor presidente. Con la presumptoria de regularidad, con la establecimiento de un coro antes había, señor presidente. Ya está el coro. Un acto declarando el 3 de septiembre de cada año, una fiesta laboral especial en la ciudad de Baguio, provincia de Benguet, en homenaje al rendimiento de las fuerzas militares japonesas lideradas por el general Tomoyuki Yamazaki en Baguio City. Hemos informado que la Comisión de Revisión de Lojas es patrocinador de ley 5640, y los otros de los que no hay objeciones a los amendamientos introducidos por el Senado al proyecto. Señor presidente, de acuerdo con nuestras reglas, me movo a que concierremos los amendamientos del Senado a ley 5640.
¿Alguna objeción? La presidenta, no, la motion es aprobada.
Señor presidente, me movo a que designemos los siguientes miembros del Comité de la Cámara.
Señor presidente, reitero mi motion to adjourn porque no tenemos ningún coro, señor presidente.
Ley 7742 y ley 1297.
Tenemos un reglamento, señor presidente.
Amendando el nuevo Acto de Banco Central. Estos son los representantes Angeline Tan, Jose Enrique García III, Cristina Rojo, Generalin Roman, Arlena Silas.
¿Alguna objeción? La presidenta, no, la motion es aprobada.
Señor presidente, me movo a que designemos al representante Salvador Belaro Jr. como miembro adicional del Comité de la Cámara de la Cámara. bajo las prohibiciones de la resolución conjunta número 26 y la resolución conjunta número 13, extendiendo el periodo de disponibilidad de fondos destinados a los víctimas de violaciones de derechos humanos durante el régimen Marcos hasta diciembre 31, 2019.
¿Alguna objeción? La presidenta, no, la motion es aprobada.
Señor presidente, me movo a que designemos los siguientes miembros del Comité de la Cámara de la Cámara bajo las prohibiciones de la resolución.
Señor presidente, reitero mi motion.
Ley 8637 y ley 1997. creando el inversión regional y coordinación de infraestructura.
Motion to adjourn, señor presidente.
Estos son los representantes Sacdalan, Mark Go, Jose Enrique García III, Lorna Silberio, Generalin Roman, Victoria, Jose Antonio Cialbarado, Orrestes Salón.
¿Alguna objeción? La presidenta, no, la motion es aprobada.
Señor presidente, estamos en el sitio de la Cámara de la Cámara de la Cámara bajo las prohibiciones de la resolución.
¿El líder de la mayoría? Antes de reconocer al líder de la mayoría, es muy claro en nuestra casa de la Cámara que el motion to adjourn en cualquier momento deberá estar en orden si aprobado por una mayoría. Si aprobado por una mayoría, por lo tanto, es sujeto a voto. El siete, el siete, el siete precedentes de motion, el, 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 los motion, el motion to adjourn no es sujeto a debate, pero es sujeto a voto. Ese es el orden de la presidenta. Y es de nuestra casa de la Cámara. Puede proceder ahora, líder de la mayoría.
Señor presidente, estamos en el sitio de la Cámara de la Cámara de la Cámara bajo las prohibiciones de la Ley 8239 y ley 1477, promoviendo la disciplina positiva y no violenta para los niños. Señor presidente, de acuerdo con nuestras reglas, me movo a que ratifiquemos el Comité de la Cámara de la Cámara.
¿Alguna objeción? La presidenta, no, la motion es aprobada. ¿El líder de la mayoría?
Señor presidente, me movo a que incluyamos coautores adicionales a ley 6613, 7421, 7856, 8626, 8627, 8654, 8673, 8682, 8683, 8691, 8698, 8699, 8700, 8714, 8715, como contenido en la lista que se ha presentado por la Comisión de Rutas.
¿Alguna objeción? La presidenta, no, la motion es aprobada. ¿El líder de la mayoría?
Señor presidente, estamos en el sitio de un mensaje del Senado.
Punto de orden, señor presidente.
Informando a la Cámara que el Senado ha pasado el amendment, ley 6724, titulado: Cambiando el nombre de la escuela Lupon de profesores en Lupon, Davao Oriental, en Davao Oriental Politécnico Instituto. Hemos informado que la Comisión de Educación Técnica es patrocinador de ley 6724, y los otros de los que no hay objeciones a los amendamientos introducidos por el Senado al proyecto. Señor presidente, de acuerdo con nuestras reglas, me movo a que concierremos los amendamientos del Senado a ley 6724.
¿Alguna objeción? La presidenta, no, la motion es aprobada. ¿El líder de la mayoría?
En parte de la mayoría, señor presidente, me movo a elegir, me movo a elegir al honorable Julia T. Oi como miembro adicional del Comité de Gestión de Desastres.
¿Alguna objeción? La presidenta, no, la motion es aprobada.
Señor presidente, movimos a que el secretario general sea dirigido a transmitir todos los proyectos tercero y aprobado en primera lectura.
¿Alguna objeción? La presidenta, no.
A la Cámara, señor presidente.
La presidenta, no, la motion es aprobada. ¿El líder de la mayoría?
Señor presidente, me movo a adjornar hasta mañana a las 3 de la tarde.
Hay un motion to adjourn hasta las 3 de la mañana, diciembre 5.